Madam Chair.
You're muted Brenda.
Excuse me. The Piscataway Township Planning Board meeting will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Courier-News, notice posted on the bulletin board of the municipal building, notice made available to the township clerk, notice sent to the Courier-News and the Star Ledger. Ms. Buckley, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Waller?
Present.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Here.
Ms. Corcoran?
Here.
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Atkins?
Here.
Mr. Foster? He's here. Mike? Mr. Edgavaria? And Madam Chair?
Here. Um, Mr. Barlow, would you please read the open public meeting notice?
Certainly, Madam Chair, just want to place on the record that in keeping with the guidelines that have been disseminated by the Department of Community Affairs, Planning Board has tried its best to comply with the Open Public Meeting Act and the DCA Guidelines. In addition, the applicants whose matters will be heard this evening had the login information for the online meeting platform put forth in the notices. Members of the public who wish to be heard will be afforded an opportunity as if they were in the actual physical space. And we've done our best to comply with the DCA Guidelines and the Open Public Meetings Act, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I believe the flag is visible over my shoulder. Can we all recite the pledge of allegiance in unison? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number five, can we swear in the professionals' place?
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Ma- Madam, Madam Chair, just with regards to number eleven, uh, twenty-five PB O three slash O four V eighty-three International and two Arlington Place, there are variances that are listed as being required. I just want to note that the applicant updated their plans to include everything that the township's professional staffs were seeking, and it no longer requires any variances of any kind. So it is just a minor subdivision. I know the agenda lists a number of variances. None of those are required anymore as the applicant complied with everything, whether it's, uh, uh, the conduit or the enclosures for the AC, everything else. Um, so their amended plans, so that's going to just be a straight minor subdivision. That's the only change, Madam Chair.
Okay, the record should reflect that in, in the amendments. Um, so then we will go back to our agenda, which is the, um, item number seven, duly audited bills. Can I have a, a motion?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Councilwoman Cahill, second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
Edgavaria's not here, and Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number eight, res- adoption of the resolutions taken on September the tenth.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to...
Says none.
There are none.
We have none tonight. Okay, thank you. Item number nine, adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of September the tenth.
Madam Chair, I like... Hello. Madam Chairman, I'd like to adopt the minutes from the regular meeting of September tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Well, a second, please?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Item number ten, twenty-four PB seven zero seven, Raven Heights LLC and Kiran Kaduri, final major subdivision. Mr. Larry Lavender appearing.
Good afternoon, or good evening, everyone. It's good to see you all again. Uh, Madam Chairman, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Barlow, it's good to see you. My name's Larry Lavender. I'm from the law firm Wiley Lavender McNore. My client is Raven Heights LLC with the owner of said LLC Kiran Kaduri here, as Madam Chairman said, for final subdivision. Um, uh, preliminary was approved back in August of twenty twenty-two. Property is, uh, seventeen and twenty-one School Street.
Ma- Madam Chair, just briefly, uh, as Mr. Lavender indicated, uh, this board by resolution adopted on September fourteenth of twenty twenty-two, had granted the applicant preliminary major subdivision on both variances. He spent the time since then making sure that they complied with all of the conditions of said preliminary major subdivision. And I believe Ms. Corcoran can confirm that having complied with all of that, they are now seeking major, uh, final major so that they can go to the building department and start building with regards to the three lot subdivision.
And Madam Chair, that is correct. The applicant has complied with all of the, uh, conditions of the preliminary approval.
So if there's no, uh, questions, do we need to go to the public?
I would open to the public, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, this matter is open to the public. Uh, anyone having questions regarding this application, you may indicate by waving your hand.
Raising your hand, or if you're at the phone, star six. No, and Madam Chair?
All right, closed to the public. Members of the board, do you have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'd like to make the motion that we approve the application, uh, for final major subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Carol Saunders, second.
Roll call.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you all very much.
You're quite welcome. Good luck.
Hold on, Larry. Have you left it there?
Oh, I'd rather. Right. Thank you all. I'll see you.
Item number eleven, twenty-five PB zero three slash zero four V as in Victor, Siva Kumar Natarajan for a minor subdivision.
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Okay. You may proceed.
Uh, well, just, um, Madam Chair, since, um, Mr. Natar is the owner and the applicant he's representing himself, he may be giving testimony, I think, out of just an abundance of caution, if we could have Ms. Saunders swear him in.
Okay.
Can you please, can you please raise your hand? Right hand, please. Do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I agree. I'm adding with the truth. Thank you. All right, so I am seeking a subdivision of, uh, both the properties, like, I mean, like, I own eighty-three International as well as two Arlington, and I want to extend my, like, you know, uh, primary residence backyard, so that's why I'm, like, asking to move the lot line to, like, you know, give a better, bigger lot for eighty-three International.
And, uh, Mr. Reimerson or Ms. Corcoran, can you just confirm that the applicant's, uh, amended plans that he submitted to the township uh, did away with any of the variances that were originally noted in the application?
Well, I'll wait for Dawn to unmute. I think we're on the same page.
That is correct, and, um, the applicant even applied for the permits to move the AC units out of the easement area for the existing dwelling.
Uh, it, it was already applied and, uh, approved, and it's closed.
Excellent.
And, and just for the record, what we received in secondary was an engineering, uh, one page showing all of these items. Most of our comments that I didn't say were marked as satisfied is because we didn't see an amended, because our, our original review was based on a subdivision plan. So I, if everything is, you know, everything is, uh, okay with the applicant, we have no other, other comments.
Thank you.
And the applicant has addressed all of the items in the status report as well.
And, and both lots are, uh, it's a minimum lot area of ten thousand square feet, and the proposed lots, uh, exceed that. So, again, he's kind of taking a piece off of one property and adding it to another.
Okay.
And, and sir, just so you understand, if the board, uh, votes favorably on your subdivision, you're going to need to have an attorney prepare a subdivision deeds for filing, okay?
Yes, sir, I do understand. Mr. Corcoran is, uh, like, you know, good enough to advise me all this next proceeding, so thank you so much, Mr. Corcoran.
You're very welcome. Okay, we still have to open it to the public. Members of, members of the public, um, does anyone in the public have any questions about this people, piece of property, or, uh, have any questions or comments about this application?
No, and Madam Chair?
Thank you. Closed to the public. All right, members of the board, uh, any questions, or I'll take a motion?
Madam Chair, I just want to confirm, um, with Mr. Barlow that, uh, notice was sent out to all neighbors, and we have, we have that back up.
Well, uh, uh, Councilwoman Cahill, um, as Ms. Buckley can confirm, because this is a minor subdivision, it's an approval, uh, by right, um, and no variances were sought. Um, this application doesn't require a notice to the two hundred foot that it would normally be. Um, he publishes it, and he has to notify the, um...
Board of Education.
The Board of Ad and he telling, and he has done that and provided Ms. Buckley with the appropriate, uh, proofs for saying.
Okay, so that means, uh, this, uh, gentleman, the president, you have not come before this board, you addressed everything before your first presentation here today.
Correct, miss, yeah, I'll say again, Mr. Uh, Mrs. Corcoran was, uh, kind enough to advise me on what need to be done, so you don't waste anybody's time, you know. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Dawn. Yeah, she's, they're, they're very good. Okay, very good, then. That, that was my only question. Thank you.
Certainly.
If there are no more questions, are we ready for a motion?
Madam Chair, Dawn Corcoran, I'll make a motion to approve the application, uh, for minor subdivision.
And I will second that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins?
Yes.
Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair?
Yes. Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Nataraj.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, do I need to stay, or, um, I'm free?
You are free to go, sir.
Thank, thank you so much. Uh, have a good night, guys.
Have a good night.
You too.
Thank you. Bye.
Item number twelve, twenty-five PB zero five slash zero six, seventeen hundred Washington Avenue Investments LLC for a preliminary and final site plan and major subdivision.
Uh, good.
Arch.
Yes, good evening, everybody, uh, members of the board, board professionals. Uh, it's been a little while since I've been in front of the planning board. I think the zoning board is getting tired of me, but, uh, it's good to see you all tonight.
Well, welcome back.
Uh, so I'm here, uh, uh, I'm here tonight, uh, representing seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue Investments LLC. And, uh, you're correct, we're seeking preliminary and final site plan with major subdivision approval, uh, to construct a hundred and ninety senior living apartments split across four buildings, consisting of three or four stories per building, and totaling approximately three hundred sixteen to three hundred seventeen thousand square feet, including a clubhouse, as well as separately subdividing forty-four lots, which are going to contain senior, single-family detached homes. Um, so, uh, the property in question is approximately forty-two point nine acres, and it's located at seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue, uh, along Suddy Avenue and Carroll Lane, and known as block five seven zero one, lot eleven. Um, and it is in the seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue redevelopment plan zone, and I'm happy to confirm, uh, and we will also confirm through testimony that we are, uh, compliant with that plan. We are not seeking any deviations from that redevelopment zone. Uh, so there's really two major components to this. There's the apartment, uh, component, and then the single-family component. Uh, so you'll see as we kind of go through the presentation, uh, we're going to essentially be presenting each of them individually, just to keep everything as organized as possible. Uh, but it's all part of the same lot. Uh, this is a really exciting project for us, uh, because it's providing a much-needed product to Piscataway. Uh, the township has rightly identified senior housing in high demand for the residents of Piscataway, and, uh, in passing the redevelopment plan in place for this property, uh, they had that use in mind. Um, and looking at everybody on the board, I can see that nobody on this board is close to senior age, so you'll have to imagine for a moment what it would be like to be a senior, uh, but I think that you'll find that the proposal is something that Piscataway will be very, uh, proud to be able to offer to its residents. Uh, I do want to additionally thank the township's professionals who have worked very closely with our team, uh, literally for years at this point, uh, to make sure that we're not only checking boxes, uh, to be conforming with the redevelopment plan, which we are, uh, but really going above and beyond to make something that's going to be exceptional, that I, I think the town's going to be really proud of, so, um, so thank everybody. Um, so with that, I do want to acknowledge the staff reports. We have, uh, the DNR report dated October first, twenty twenty-five. We have, uh, the famous tri-party staff report, uh, which is, uh, dated September twenty-ninth. Uh, we have a fire review, uh, memo, uh, dated October second, CME's report dated October first, and the Dolan and Dean traffic report, uh, dated August twentieth. Uh, we believe that we can address all the comments in the report, and we will happily continue to work with your professionals to their satisfaction, uh, as part of any compliance. I do want to mention there were two comments, uh, briefly, that I believe were in the tri-party report, uh, that we just want to confirm we are agreeing to, uh, that, that's the fiber optic conduit, uh, as well as, uh, providing appropriate fencing around our stormwater basins. Uh, so I just want to confirm we are, uh, complying with that, so we are a fully conforming, uh, application with no deviations. Um, unless there's any preliminary questions of me, I do have three witnesses tonight. Um, and so I'm ready to proceed unless, uh, unless anybody has any preliminary questions.
Tim, just one question. Did you say forty or forty-four single-family?
So it's forty-four lots. However, you'll see there's forty-four single fam- or sorry, forty single-family homes, I believe, or thirty-nine. I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to my engineer on that one when we get to him. Uh, but some of those lots are going to be utilized as stormwater, uh, and I think there's an open space lot, so forty-four lots for the subdivision. Not all of them are going to contain a, a home, however, but we'll see then.
That's what I saw, forty detached residences. I just wanted to, but I'm sure the testimony will reveal that. Thank you.
Not a problem. Uh, okay, so my first witness tonight is, uh, is Chris, uh, Zelay from, uh, Menlo Engineering. He's our civil engineer. Um, and if we could have him sworn in.
Uh, Chris, can you please raise your right hand?
Yep, right here.
Do you swear that the testimony about the give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, if you can briefly just let the board know, uh, your qualifications, so they can, uh, accept you as a, uh, civil engineer.
Yes, my name is Christopher Zelay. Last name is S as in Sam, Z as in zebra, A L A Y. I currently work at Menlo Engineering Associates located at two sixty-one Cleveland Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey. Uh, received a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Rhode Island in two thousand and eight, and I've been a licensed professional engineer, uh, in the state of New Jersey since twenty thirteen. My license is in good standing, and I've testified before this board, as well as, uh, many other boards throughout the state.
I would ask that he be accepted as a, uh, expert in civil engineering.
Uh, he's accepted for this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Chris, you're familiar with the site, you're familiar with the plan, you're familiar with, uh, all the specifics, if you can, if you can just take us through that, and, uh, I'll give the floor over to you.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you, Tim. Um, so tonight, I have prepared for you, uh, four exhibits that, if I can share my screen, I will introduce them to the board.
Christopher, what we'll do is, first one will be A one, A two, and we'll just, uh, we'll mark them as such, okay?
Okay, great.
And if, when you bring them up, each one, if you could just identify it for the record.
Okay, so, can everyone see my screen at this point?
Yes, sir.
Yes. All right, so this first exhibit is entitled Ria dash seventeen hundred Washington Avenue Existing Conditions Exhibit dated ten eight twenty-five, which I'll introduce as A one. And this exhibit is depicting an aerial background that shows the existing conditions of the subject property. The property boundary is highlighted, and you'll see, uh, we have two boxes highlighted, known as Site A and Site B. Site A being the location of the single-family subdivision, and Site B being the location, uh, of the multifamily development. Uh, the second exhibit I'll introduce is entitled Ria seventeen hundred Washington Avenue Overall Plan Exhibit dated ten eight twenty-five as well. Uh, this is an overview, really over the same aerial background, same scale, and it now shows the proposed site improvements within Site A and Site B as a colorized rendering. Um, and this was, uh, basically colorized rendering of the submitted overall plan. That was part of the site plan set. Uh, the third exhibit that I'll be sharing is entitled Ria seventeen hundred Washington Avenue Site A Site Plan Exhibit. And this is essentially, uh, zoomed in, uh, site plan, uh, colorized rendering of the site plan over the same aerial background at a larger scale, with the zone table shown, uh, and landscaping, uh, shown as well. And again, this is a colorized rendering of the submitted site plan. That was part of the site plan set. And the fourth exhibit, uh, A four, uh, is a zoomed in, uh, colorized rendering of the site plan for Site B, and this is entitled Ria seventeen hundred Washington Avenue Site B Site Plan Exhibit, also dated ten eight twenty-five, and this has the zone table and landscaping shown as well. So those are the four exhibits that I'll be referring to as I go through my testimony. Um, what I'll start with is Exhibit A one, and describing the property as a whole. Uh, the subject property is an irregular-shaped lot, approximately forty-two point nine seven acres in area, uh, and is designated as block fifty-seven oh one, lot eleven, as shown on the tax map for Piscataway Township. Has approximately seven hundred and eighty-nine linear feet of frontage on the west side of South Washington Avenue, and the property extends back in, in somewhat of an L shape, uh, towards the west, towards Suddy, Suddy Avenue. Uh, the address is seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue. Uh, it's located about a thousand feet north of the intersection with, uh, Mettler's Lane, and the site is located, uh, was within the S C H Senior Citizen Housing Zone, uh, and is subject to the regulations of the seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue Redevelopment Plan, uh, which is dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, surrounding the property, you'll see to the north, there's an ele- the elementary school, and then there's additional industrial warehouses, uh, that are just a little bit off, uh, off the view. Uh, to the east of the property, there's open space that is, uh, designated, I believe, to be a township park in the future. Uh, to the south of the site, there's, uh, an additional lot that is part of the redevelopment plan for seventeen hundred South Washington Avenue that will also, uh, hopefully eventually be senior, uh, citizen housing. And beyond that, there's Woodland Road with single-family homes, and to the west of the property, there's, uh, additional single-family homes along Suddy Avenue and Carroll Lane. Um, currently, the property is vacant. Uh, it's mostly open spaces, you can see, to the, to the southeast and to the northwest. And then there's a, a big area of, uh, woods in the middle of the property. Most of that wooded area is wetlands currently, uh, at, per a DEP LOI that has been, uh, obtained. The wetlands have a fifty-foot, uh, wetlands buffer, and there's three pockets of additional isolated wetlands in the northwest corner of the site. And really, the only, um, significant existing feature on site is a, uh, JCPNL one hundred-foot-wide uh, easement for high-power tension wires, where there's a, a tower and two additional utility poles located, uh, on the east side of the site, nearer to, uh, South Washington Avenue. Um, and based on really all this, uh, the constraints, the, the developable area of the site is greatly reduced from the forty-three-acre site to about, uh, twenty-two acres that, that is really, uh, developable due to the environmental, uh, constraints. I'll move to Exhibit A two, uh, and, and what we're seeking approval for tonight is preliminary and final, uh, site plan approval and major subdivision. Um, and as, as Tim stated, there's really two components to this application. Site A, which is the single-family subdivision, and Site B, which is the multifamily, um, containing a hundred and ninety apartments and thirty, it's actually thirty-nine single-family homes. So there, the subdivision is for forty-five lots over the property. Um, forty-four of the lots are located within the single-family portion. That's thirty-nine single-family homes, uh, an open-space lot, three basin lots, and actually, the last lot is for the roadway, which is, uh, to be privately owned and maintained, and that was at the request of the township. And then the, the last lot, the forty-fifth lot, is the remainder of the site, which is encompasses the multifamily portion of the project, as well as the large area of wetlands, uh, between the two sites. And so now that we kind of got an overview, um, I'll focus on each site individually and go through, again, you know, existing conditions of each, each area, proposed improvements, and maybe it, it would make sense to even take some questions, if anyone has any questions on each site wall, without confusing things too much. Um, so focusing on Site A, I'll actually go back to the existing conditions, Exhibit A one. Uh, this portion of the site that is being developed within Site A and the, the forty-four lots as part of the four, uh, single-family subdivision consists of nine point oh seven acres. Uh, this area is mostly field, open spaces, you can see, with a few small pockets of woods, and then three isolated wetland areas, and then it just encroaches slightly into, uh, the larger wetland area to the south. Uh, the site slopes, uh, pretty significantly from the northeast corner of the property to the southwest corner towards Carroll Lane, and to the south towards, uh, the large pocket of wetlands. It slopes about twenty-four feet from elevation ninety-eight down to seventy-four. So it's quite a bit of great change that we're, we're dealing with, uh, through this piece of property. And so what the applicant is seeking approval for is a forty-four, is thirty-nine single-family, uh, single-family homes. Access to the property is from Carroll Lane, which is a fifty-foot-wide public right-of-way, uh, off of Suddy Avenue. Uh, we are extending Carroll Lane approximately eighteen hundred square, eighteen hundred linear feet in, in kind of a looped configuration as a private roadway, um, to, to provide frontage for each of the single-family homes. Uh, the density, based on the thirty-nine single-family homes on this nine point oh seven, uh, acre area, is about four point three units per acre, which is compliant, uh, with the redevelopment plan. Uh, the lots vary in size from about five thousand square feet, uh, for one of these typical rectangular-shaped lots that are fifty by one hundred in dimension, and up to, uh, the largest lot, I believe, is ten thousand six hundred and eighty-one square feet, and that's one of these corner lots where, uh, the property kind of jogs back a little bit deeper, and the, the lot is a little bit more irregularly shaped. Uh, the, each home, it, uh, requires a setback of twenty feet along the front, twelve feet on either side, and thirty-five feet from the rear, and the homes vary in size from about nineteen hundred square feet to twenty-one hundred square feet, uh, in, in total, uh, floor area. Now, this complies with all of the redevelopment plan requirements for maximum building coverage uh, of twenty percent permitted and maximum height of not more than thirty feet. Uh, the design, uh, and architectural design comply completely with the redevelopment plan. Uh, each home uh, contains a single-car garage and a twelve-foot-wide driveway that extends, uh, to the Carroll Lane extension, extended road, providing two parking spaces for each, uh, each single-family home, which again is compliant with the redevelopment plan and RSIS standards. Uh, there's sidewalk provided along both sides of the road to allow for pedestrian, uh, passive recreation and, and exercise, uh, and, and it leads down to, um, one of the non-single-family lots, which is Lot One, is an open-space lot that provides, uh, a nice landscaping area, gazebo, and a couple benches for residents to, uh, get a little passive, uh, exercise and, and sit down in a nicer landscaped area. The remaining three or four lots are, uh, three lots for stormwater basins. There's one centrally located in the middle of the site. Uh, another one at nor- near the southwest portion of the, uh, improvements, and the one at the southeast side of the site, and again, that's, you know, with this, with the gray, the existing grade of the site grading towards the south. The basins are located middle to, to the south end of the, the single-family subdivision. And then the final lot, again, is within, uh, the private roadway, uh, that is to be owned and maintained by an HOA that will be created as part of this project to, uh, general, essentially maintain everything that comes along with, uh, this age-restricted housing development. Uh, regarding stormwater management of the property, the project is a major development, since it, and it triggers stormwater management being over an acre of disturbance and greater than a quarter acre of increased impermeable coverage. Uh, the applicant proposes to construct a conventional stormwater system consisting of underground pipes, catch basins, which will convey runoff to uh, the multiple bio-retention basins. Um, due to the, the significant slope from one side of the site, there'll also be a drainage swale that runs along the, the rear of each of the properties, uh, which will convey some of the... Uh, which will convey some of the offsite drainage and stormwater runoff that since kind of. This whole area drains to the south, we have a significant drainage area. Uh, to to try and bypass some of the stormwater runoff around our basins through a swell. Um, and and to the wetlands beyond our site, which is maintaining the existing drainage pattern. Uh, that that exists today. We're following all green infrastructure requirements by providing bio retention basins, which will achieve uh multiple. Uh, functions in stormwater design, one being water quality. Um, which we're we're achieving uh eighty percent T S S removal for all. Uh, for all pavement surfaces. And secondly, for runoff quantity reductions to to meet all requirements of the D P municipality. Uh, county and and soil erosion, uh our design uh certainly complies with all of these requirements. Utilizing this green infrastructure uh design. Uh, moving on to utilities, um. Sewer is available in Suddy Avenue, so we're providing a sewer main extension that will service each of the thirty nine homes. And similarly with water, gas, electric. Uh, utility connections will all be serviced from existing infrastructure within Suddy Avenue. And then finally fiber optics, which is going to be provided or i- is provided uh on the plans along both. The frontages along both sides of the roads so that when uh. You know, high speed, you know, internet broadband, think FiOS is is available in the area. We'll have these fiber optics conduit fiber optics conduits um available for for the residents to to obtain that service. Uh, moving on to to landscape, you'll see we've provided a substantial amount of landscaping throughout the site. Uh, including uh nice perimeter landscaping, utilizing evergreen trees and shade trees. Provide some buffering between the new development and existing single family residences to the west. Um, in total, we're providing a hundred and fifty two shade trees, a hundred and sixty one evergreens. Twenty four flowering trees and eighty eight shrubs. Um, we we did provide with this latest resubmission a a tree replacement calculations. Um, by going out to the site and and taking some tree counts uh in a tree plot and then uh. Prograding it across the site uh based on the amount of wooded area. And so that's that's within the site plan set. Uh, and finally, for for lighting design, uh we've designed the site utilizing sixteen pole mounted L E D lantern style fixtures. Which are more decorative and uh residential looking, kind of a nicer look than than some of the the taller industrial commercial. Uh, light fixtures and they're mounted at um, I believe fourteen feet high to provide. Uh, an average of about point six four foot candles uh through the roadway to provide safe and adequate lighting to the development. Um, without getting too bright, since this is a residential development. Um, and that really finishes my direct testimony on Site A, so if there's any questions from the board or. Uh. Anyone has, I'd be happy to answer on this before I move on to Site B and the multifamily.
Uh, Madam Chair, this is uh Mayor Wall. I just have one question. Um, Mr. Slay, the southerly portion of where there's no sidewalk going out to Carol Lane, is there a reason why there's no sidewalk on that side?
Uh, no, it was just because we're we're tying into the existing sidewalk on Carol Lane. So that's really the main reason is that there's existing sidewalk there that we're connecting to.
All right, well, we're gonna have to do is you got, you're gonna have to run the sidewalk on that southerly side.
Okay, I I don't think that should be an issue.
Okay.
Any other questions of the board members of this part of portion of the testimony so far?
Madam Chair, if I could, um, just if you, if you, thank you very much.
Mm hmm.
If you don't mind, just could you point out on the map again where the wetlands are? Um, in relation to the development?
So really, the wetlands are right along the back of the subdivision line. You can see this this dark black line here is the limit of wetlands. So it runs right along the the perimeter of the subdivision. And then from that uh wetlands line is a fifty foot buffer. So it actually encroaches onto the site slightly, uh, which which will be requiring a D P permit for.
Did you mention there were a couple of other pockets on this site, I thought?
Yes, there's three isolated pockets. Uh, it's there, it's a little over a half acre uh of isolated wetlands, which were permitted to fill up to an acre on any property. So we're uh applying to the D P to fill those isolated pockets.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the members of the board?
Madam Chair, this is Carol Saunders. I had a question. Are there going to be sheds on these smaller properties?
No, I believe it was actually um, the the town requested that no sheds be permitted on the properties. And really, and since an HOA will be created to to pretty much fully maintain these properties, there's less need for, you know, sheds for lawn mowers and that sort of thing.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barley, you think we should open up to the public at this point?
No, Madam Chair, I would open to the public when all of the testimonies end.
Okay, hearing no further questions from the board at this time, we can.
Additional question.
Okay.
Where the homes are, Mr. Slay. Uh, I forget the the redevelopment plan, is there gonna be like if somebody wants a patio outside?
Um, as long as the the property main is under the impervious coverage.
Okay.
Permits, then I I don't believe that was restricted, no.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, Dawn Corcoran, um, Mr. Slay, are is the intent to have basements on these homes?
No, there's no no basements proposed.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I guess you can move on, sir.
Okay, thank you. Um, so moving on to Site B, again, as I said, these are really two standalone sites that are separated by that large uh wetland body. Um. For the for Site Plan B, we're seeking approval for four multifamily apartment buildings. Uh, the buildings are a mix of three and four stories and contain a hundred and ninety apartments. And that's uh broken down to one hundred and thirty four two bedroom apartments and fifty six one bedroom apartments. Um, and as stated, the developable land of this uh portion of the site, like this. Uh, larger lot, which is thirty three point nine acres, the developable area is actually uh more like sixteen point three acres. Due to um, the the large area of wetlands, so sixteen point two nine acres is the area that's not wetlands. Um, and that provides a net density of eleven point six six units per acre. Uh, where the redevelopment plan permits twelve units per acre. Uh, the complex also includes an eight thousand square foot, single story clubhouse uh with a pool. Uh, pool shed, large patio area around the pool, and then three pickleball pickleball courts for recreation. This clubhouse is going to be available to the residents of both the multifamily and the single family developments. Um, access to the site is from the southeast corner uh on South Washington Avenue. Uh, it's it's a boulevard style entrance where there's a a grass median that separates the ingress and egress lane. So we can provide some nice landscaping uh from South Washington Avenue. The entrance is planned to be at the moment right in, right out only. Um, as required by the township unless we we are applying for a left turn in from South Washington Avenue. But we're applying i- if the county permits it. Uh, tha- then we will request uh the left turn in and make the uh required improvements as as determined by the county. And uh the township professionals were were okay with that. Um. The layout and circulation were were really dictated due to the constraints of the property. Um, we have an eighty five foot front yard setback from South Washington Avenue, which provides a nice green corridor along South Washington Avenue. Uh, we're constrained to the west by the wetlands and the fifty foot wetlands buffers. And then um. Really, within this developable area, we have a uh J C P N L overhead wire easement, which is easier to see on the existing additions plan. Really cuts right through the center of our developable area, so. Um, i- it took some time to to come up with a layout that really worked. Uh, dude, with the constraints and then also with the grade change from the the northeast corner of the property. Uh, we have the same about twenty twenty five feet of grade change uh from north to south. And actually, I didn't um, I did mean to touch on the existing conditions of this portion there. Similar to to the Site A, it's mostly open space with some pockets of trees. And again, the only significant improvements on uh this area is that J C P N L easement. And we're we're essentially staying uh out of the uh the wetland area. Um, so going back to uh to to A four and the the proposed improvements. Um. The constraints really really drove the the access and layout and circulation of of the site. Uh, so the four buildings uh are designated as A through D. Building A is a three story uh forty nine thousand three hundred and seventeen square foot building, containing thirty one units. And it's uh. Set eighty six feet back from the South Washington Avenue right of way. Building B is uh of forty six thousand thirty three square foot building in total. And it's actually split three and four story uh with the back half of the building being four stories and the front half uh being three stories with a rooftop terrace. And that was to keep from uh either of the two buildings along the South Washington frontage from being too overbearing along the right of way. Uh, being four stories in height, so we we were limited to three stories. Uh, and this building B contains twenty nine units. Uh, the two larger of the four buildings, Buildings C and D, uh are located towards the rear. Each of these buildings are four stories in height with Building C being uh a total of ninety seven thousand eight hundred and thirty three square feet. And containing sixty two units and Building D being uh L L shaped building, four stories in height, one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and thirty six square feet. And this building contains uh sixty eight units, again, for a total of uh one hundred and ninety units. Uh, the clubhouse, eight thousand square foot clubhouse is located at the end of the Entrance Boulevard, so it does provide a more kind of aesthetic. Uh, look when you enter the 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 site. And it's located adjacent to Building D, and again, this has uh the pool and patio and and recreation in the rear. Um, and it's kind of located towards the the middle of the development to provide an easy access for uh for all all residents. The parking field is is more centrally located between all of the buildings. Uh, and it contains three hundred and fourteen parking spaces. And that includes twenty seven land bank parking spaces if if deemed that uh that we need the parking spaces. Uh, located around the J C P N L uh tower, so. So I guess I'll touch on that uh in regards to the layout and circulation. The J C P N L Tower is located um between Buildings B and C. And and requires a uh one hundred foot buffer or fifty foot on all sides of that tower, so that that's why we have that large green space there. And uh we provided the the land bank parking around that that green space there if uh if we determine that we we need it. Um, each of the spaces are sized nine by eighteen and drive aisles are twenty five feet wide, which is compliant with the redevelopment plan, township ordinance. And R S I S requirements. Um, we parked the site at one point five spaces per unit in accordance with the the redevelopment plan. And uh an additional fourteen spaces required for for the clubhouse, uh whi- which brings us into compliance. Uh, with the uh three hundred and fourteen spaces. And the complex uh also includes eleven handicap spaces and forty four E V spaces. And we we spread those out in near each building, so we have uh two spaces in front of Buildings A and B. And then uh two in front of C, two in front of D, and then three in front of the clubhouse to to provide. Uh, accessibility to to each of the buildings for for residents and visitors. Um, the layout complies with all required setback and coverage requirements, as I stated, eighty five feet from South Washington Avenue. And there's more than enough uh setback space from the rear of the property, uh as well as the side side yard setbacks. Um, and we're under on the uh maximum building and and impervious coverages. Uh, Buildings B, C, and D are equipped with pickup drop off areas. You can see we have these areas where someone can come and and drop someone off towards the front of the building. Um, and and kind of allow them to enter the building at the the main entrance, uh which each have a a canopy or overhang. Um, sidewalk is provided along the frontage of each of these buildings and really interconnects throughout. Uh, the site to provide accessibility and A D A accessibility uh for for all residents and visitors. Um, the sidewalk continues to a perimeter walkway, which provides some, you know, passive or active recreation. There's some, there's benches located intermittently along the the walkway to provide areas to to rest, to relax outside. There's a nice roundabout with some landscaping uh behind Building B. And then uh the the walkways will connect to the to the clubhouse. And uh down to the sidewalk provided along the South Washington Avenue uh frontage. And you'll see um. That along this the perimeter walkway, we provide an additional ten foot wide strip of uh reinforced grass pavers. This was a requirement of the fire official, and it's one of the reasons that we resubmitted the plans again before this this public meeting to show that. Um, we were able to comply with the fire officials' concerns and requirements that uh. Access for emergency vehicles could be made around the back of the buildings. Um, which we were able to do that, so each each of the apartment buildings has emergency uh accessibility behind the back of the buildings. And it's not so much as the fire official explained to fight fires, but in case access is needed for a ladder truck. For a rescue or or some some sort of uh rescue behind the buildings, they wanted emergency vehicles to be able to make that access. But um, they said fire, actual firefighting would, you know, in in that rare, you know, occurrence would would take place from the the central uh parking area. Uh, and we did, we did actually just recently receive a an approval letter from the fire official saying that we we really complied with all of their comments, their their major concerns. And then we'll work with them for additional hydrants and and fire department connections and that sort of thing. Um. We we also provided four uh dumpster enclosures, one located near each building, so. Uh, near Buildings A and B, we have dumpster enclosures uh. Uh, near near South Washington Avenue between the two buildings. Building C has a uh dumpster enclosure off the the south corner of the building. And then the fourth dumpster enclosure is between the clubhouse and uh Building D where uh the the refuse will will. There's space allotted within the building to collect refuse internally and then and uh a member of the building management will bring. Bring refuse and recycling out to to these enclosures to be picked up by a private hauler. And since it's a private hauler, we can really determine how many pickups are are required. Um, I know there's a question about uh the volume of recycling. Uh, that may be required for uh as a breakdown of each unit. And and if we need to, we'll we'll work with the Department of Public Works on that. If we need additional dumpster enclosure space, we can provide it. Um, but feel that, you know, given that these are senior uh age restricted. Uh, homes that, you know, uh the same amount of recycling may not be generated as a typical single family residence. Um, but we can certainly work with the Department of Public Works to uh to satisfy their concerns and and provide the additional dumpster enclosure area if needed. Um. And uh we are providing a freestanding sign located within that boulevard entrance in the in the center median. Uh, that that will comply with the redevelopment plan. Uh, the sign will be a max of thirty two square feet, uh six feet in height and setback twenty feet from the South Washington Avenue public right of way. Um, and again, this uh the site design is is in accordance with the redevelopment plan and R S I S standards. Uh, moving on to stormwater and utilities, uh again, the the site drains mostly from north to south. We provided four separate bio retention basins, uh which again meet meet the requirements of of green infrastructure. Uh, the basins uh help us meet water quality requirements and runoff quantity requirements. Um, and then discharge to uh about about half the site, the two basins near Buildings C and D discharged toward the wetlands. And then the other two basins discharge towards uh South Washington Avenue, where we'll be running a. Uh, stormwater line down South Washington Avenue to to discharge to the uh nearby drainage ditch that uh crosses South Washington Avenue, just a few hundred feet away. Um, again, the the reasoning behind the the two separate discharge points is that's what it where where runoff goes in the existing additions. And the the plan is always to try and maintain existing drainage patterns uh where where possible. So the the design really meets all D P, again, D P Township Municipal County uh soil erosion standards. And uh regarding the the additional utilities, there's. For South Washington Avenue being such a major road, there's not as many utilities nearby on this site. We we're running a sewer extension approximately uh. Tw- uh twelve hundred feet to the south, down the center of South Washington Avenue to connect to the nearest sewer manhole. That's at the intersection with Mettler's Lane. And we're running an existing uh water main extension to the north. Um, that one's about eleven eleven hundred feet to the north to connect to the nearest existing water. Um, that one's about eleven, eleven hundred feet to the north to connect to the nearest existing water main. Uh, closer to Knox Drive where, where the industrial warehouses are located. And then gas, electric, again, what will be connecting to existing infrastructure. And uh, fiber optics will be run along the property frontage as, as required. Uh, again, what, we're proposing uh, a substantial amount of landscaping uh, to provide nice uh, green uh, perimeter and screening along South Washington Avenue. Um, a- and along the, the perimeter to the west. And, and then in, intermittently throughout the parking lot, each parking aisle uh, has a green island between the, the head-on parking spaces. And that's to, to break up the pavement a little bit, to provide some additional greenery and uh, and trees throughout, uh, throughout the site. So in total, we're providing seventy-three shade trees, one hundred and three evergreen trees, eighty-three flowering trees, uh, six hundred and twenty-eight shrubs and one thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven ground cover um, as shown on the submitted uh, landscape plan. So again, uh, a substantial amount of landscaping to really make this a nice uh, residential uh, community. And uh, lastly, lighting, um, we're providing the same decorative lantern style light fixtures. There's thirty-six of them located throughout the parking lot, uh, mounted at fourteen feet in height. And then where we're more restricted in the JCP and L easement, we, we had to raise the elevation of those light fixtures to eighteen feet just to cast light a little bit further into that easement without actually placing light fixtures within that JCP and L easement. Because it's, it is restricted uh, by that utility. So um, again, we, we're providing uh, safe and adequate lighting throughout the facility with a, a minimum of point-six-foot candles within the parking area and an average of, of one point-two to, to two-foot candles uh, throughout the, the parking and drive aisles. Um, which is, which is certainly a safe level without being too bright within a residential complex. Um, and again, that, that really sums up my direct testimony. If there's any questions for, for site B.
Okay, members of the board. Um, what questions do you have of Mr. Zelay?
Madam Chair, uh, real quickly, Mr. Zelay, um, the landscaped uh, islands that are in the parking lot there, are they going to be irrigated?
Um, we don't, we don't currently show irrigation. Um, but being an HOA in property management, um, you know, there, there, there's water circulating throughout the site. So that they can be maintained since there'll be management on site.
All right, um, I think with the big ones, they, they should be irrigated because otherwise you're going to end up with a patch of dead grass out there. I know there's an HOA, but the only way they're going to be able to maintain it, I, I'm not going to see somebody constantly running a long hose out there to water it, right?
Yeah, I, 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 I understand. Um,
All right, here's what, here's what we'll do. You, you'll install um, PVC to, so as if it's going to be hooked up. Um, so it's, so it's there on your, for, to install. Right there. Cause you know, once you, once you do the parking lot, you're not going to be dig, digging the parking lot up to, to run it. So you got, you know, you, you follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, 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 it's, it's probably a good idea to do it. And you know, we don't, obviously they don't want to plant all these trees just for them to die. So,
Yeah.
Um,
I would just say, just have them run the PVC it for the piping for the um, and those there out there, right, right dawn, don't you think that should be, should be done that way? Cause otherwise I could, I could see that all dying off and, and it just mechanically having somebody run hoses from each building out there. You know, with the cars out there, i- i- it's, it would be very awkward.
And all, all too often, I mean, it's our, our landscape architect is, he sits in our, in our office. So he is constantly getting complaints about older developments where you have the, the landscaping that's died. And you know, they're looking forward to be replaced and it becomes a back and forth as to who's responsible. So yes, why don't we just take care of that now?
Yeah, well, uh, we can work with Jonathan, uh, Mr. Rahi and, and figure out the, the total area that should be landscaped or irrigated.
Okay.
Like a landscape sprinkler system is what you're envisioning?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, that's Mr. Barlow. That's what we're looking at.
Yeah, um, uh, um, we can, we can certainly agree to that. I, I have been communicating with the uh, with the applicant. Uh, we can agree to that. Obviously, we'll, we'll, we'll have to take some time to design it with your professionals to make sure that it's a, uh, you know, what's appropriate, but we can certainly agree to that.
Yeah. And the only other question is I just want to make sure Mr. Arch and Mr. Slay that the, uh, there is conduit PB, conduit line out there for the fiber optic runs?
Yes, that'll be along the, the property frontage, correct.
And where, where, where is it? Where is that going and out to? It's going to go out to South Washington Avenue, correct?
It's along, yeah, it's along the South Washington Avenue frontage.
Okay.
And, and if I may, just with regard, um, there was a comment, number six in the staff report, that you also bring an easement along the um, property line up to the wetlands. Um, to run that, that fiber as well, I don't.
So, uh, yeah, I kind of had a question about that as to what, because these two developments are standalone.
Mm-hmm.
That were, you know, our intent was to run it along the property frontage and not connect it between the two sites. Because really there's no, no need to, and we'd, we'd be crossing the wetlands. So I wasn't.
All right. So here, here's the story on that. We're in the process of trying to run fiber optic line with the ecological park across the street. Um, so we're going to have to have it go back to police headquarters, which means it's going through your property out the back way to get, it says the crow, crow flies. So that is, that is it. So we got to figure out how that's going to go out there and we'll worry about the DEP stuff later.
So if we can, the, the only way we can install it is with DEP's permission and getting that permit. So as long as, if we can word it in a way that it's conditional on DEP granting the approval.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
To come back.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
They normally for DEP will allow for security purposes like that uh, to go back there to, to have that happen. So, we don't want to see something large, but if, since it's going to be underground, you know. All right, we'll, we'll work, uh, Mr. Barlow, we'll work out that verbiage in the board approval.
Ma- Mayor, just so I'm clear, are you talking on, or dawn, the, the northern edge of the property or the southern of the property?
So what it is, um, actually it's going to be, it's going to be along, let me just get to the overall.
Can we use my exhibit? That's here, I can.
Probably along the northern, probably along the northern edge.
I spoke with our engineer today and he was saying along the northern portion up to where the wetland stops. And then as, as lo- as well as the southern portion up to where the wetland is.
So,
I'm sorry, Tom, I overdid it.
The north, the northern portion, the northern extreme border of site B.
Correct. Chris is showing, he's,
To the south, the south portion of site A. So Mayor, it wants to, it needs to come out like on, on South, Southie?
Yeah, out to Southie.
Okay.
Whichever way it gets it out to Southie.
So along the entire property, southern property line through the wetlands and everything to study out. Cause on the south property.
I mean, it's okay if we come out to our park.
The may, we're okay with the north or the south. It's just so, you just want to get it out to, that, out to Southie.
That's correct.
So, okay.
And we're talking, we're talking, we're speaking about two four-inch PVC pipes.
Yeah. It looks like if you run it along the northern edge of site B. Run through the, 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 the stormwater lot and then you can put it under the road.
That would be the, the best route because we, we're stopping at someone's, somebody else's house in the south direction. This, this is the shorter route as well.
Yeah.
And we are, we would be able to tie right into the.
We'll, we'll take, we'll take a look at that with the subject with the engineers because we could always go out through the park too with the PVC.
Okay, I can, I can work with that, Mayor.
Cause you know, you could tie in for the security cameras for the park too, for both parks.
Hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're, we're happy to, I, I guess so. The idea is to, to get from South Washington to Southie. That's what we're.
That's correct.
Okay, that was what, I was, I, I, I apologize because I was, because I thought it was connecting site A to site B.
Well, we got that, that issue too, but if we can get it out to Southie, because either way you're going to connect.
Right, okay. I think I understand it now. Yeah, we,
And we'll work, we'll work with the engineers on that.
We can certainly get some language and get, and we'll, we'll, we will agree to that, absolutely.
Is, would the easement be okay to be non-exclusive where additional utilities could run in that easement? So that if we had to connect the utility between the two sites, we wouldn't have to disturb more than just one.
I want to talk about, and we'll have to talk about that with developers, because the only thing is concerned, because the, the fiber, it's really security for security stuff. I would have, we'd have to take a hard look at that.
Okay.
Okay, well, we, I'm sure we can work something out. Okay.
We're, we're happy to agree with whatever, with whatever.
Yeah.
We end up, that works. We're happy with that.
Okay.
Yeah, there should be, there should be, there should be, you know, conduits for both developments. But then the fiber, you know, a conduit for the town to get out to, to Southie, whichever way, how it happens.
And we will agree to that, absolutely.
Yeah.
Um, if I may, Madam Chair, I just have questions. With regard to the proposed affordable housing units, um, can you just confirm that the units will be located within um, each of the buildings? They're not going to be centered, they have to be dispersed throughout this development, correct? You're, you're confirmed? Okay.
Yeah, we'll agree to that.
Then, um, this may be more, I wasn't sure if your architect was coming on, but we do need confirmation that the um, the project itself is going to comply with the UHAC requirements for age-restricted developments. And that's something that um, you know, if your architect could, could prepare a memo, it, you know, as a part of resolution compliance, we just have to make sure that we're, we are, the municipality is getting credits for these units. Um,
We're happy to do that and, and Ben Horton is here, he will testify.
Oh, perfect, okay. And just one, one last question for Mr. Slay. Are there any proposed bike racks?
We don't have any proposed now, no.
Now you're going to have to get some bike racks.
I agree with you. I think we would just encourage people to walk or ride their bikes over to that clubhouse. You know, we don't want to just see everybody moving their cars around on this lot. So I think that should be included as, you know, as part of this approval.
Well, I, I can then, um, counsel, I, I can envision then people using bikes to go to the traffic, like to go across the street to the ecological park, which is going to have a very large, large
Sure.
multi-use bike path out there.
We're happy to put bike, uh, uh, bike racks in and we'll work with your professionals for proper listening.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, hi, Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, Councilwoman Cahill here. Um, I have a couple of questions. I think one of which probably pertains to, you know, both sites. Um, but just uh, first, if you could zoom in on the um, multi-family dwelling apartments um, closer to the,
Oh, site B.
Yes, site B, the, the tower again. And just, I apologize, just walk me through. So it's a fifty-foot setback. I guess some is a little bit larger than others. Um, what, what other, what other, um, is there anything else around that, that tower there?
Around the specific, in this specific location, no, it's just the tower and it contains, you know, multiple lines. Um, there are additional utility poles located, uh, I don't have them shown on the plan, but located closer to the entrance. Um, that supports some of the lower.
Not existing though.
They're existing, yes.
They are. Are those, um,
They're, they're just utility, they're not towers, they're just your standard, correct?
Okay. And um, so, uh, Mr. Slay, just asking because you've done this before. Have you drawn up um, plans for other developments of this nature? Where a big tower of that nature is kind of like right in the center?
Um, I mean, exa- exactly this layout? Not exactly, but we're, we're following. So the utility company has all sorts of regulations as far as what's permitted within the easement, how close to the easement. So um, that, that, that was part of the design is that there's a minimum distance between corner of building with the one hundred foot wide easement, which, which extends beyond where the actual wires are. Um, a- and that we, we maintained those minimum buffers. And, and did try to configure the buildings so that we didn't have buildings that were just flush, flat, you know, right up against that easement. You know, we have buildings that are kind of catty-cornered and angled towards the, the overhead lines to, to make it a little more visually appealing and
Right.
Um, not as impactful.
Understood. Um, well, I mean, that's a whole other issue. Somebody wants to move in with that big ugly tower there, so be it. You know, I think people in New Jersey, their hand is forced to, to get whatever anyone's willing to develop on, to be honest with you. But people want to move there, that's their prerogative. Um,
We're kind of doing what we can with what we, with what we have here.
Right. My concern though is, um, so a couple of things. So that land then is owned by, uh, you said it was JCP and L?
Correct. Or it's, there's, it's owned by the, the owner, but uh, there's an easement and it's uh, non-exclusive easement to JCP and L.
Okay. And so how do they access that if they needed to?
If they have to come in and maintain it? I mean, they're granted permission um, to, to enter the site. And you know, currently there's no access roads or anything that'll give them access. Now there's actually a roadway that gives them, allows them to access the,
Right, right.
The lines.
And um, will JCP and L consider some sort of fencing uh, to prevent people from wandering over there, which I'd imagine even though this is senior housing, you may have families visiting, things of that nature. It, it feels to me a little bit too, um, negligent not to put some, some sort of fencing around there.
Uh, we're, so the plans are currently being reviewed at JCP and L and they're just asking us to, you know, provide some statements and notes and things on the plans. It's not something that they've requested and yeah, I don't know that they would want, really.
Oh, I don't, I honestly, uh, Mr. Slay, I really don't care what JCP and L wants.
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking about our residents here in town and protecting them. Cause somebody's going to wander into that spot. So I'm going to vote no unless a fence goes up, to be honest. And I encourage everyone else to vote no unless we get a commitment tonight of some sort of protection being put there, quite frankly.
If I can just ask Mr. Zelay, Zelay, the restrictions in the easement are restrictions on um, uh, buildings and certain structures of a certain height. There is no restriction on walking through that area. It's not a, that's not a hazard or anything along those lines. I think, I think, I think we want to clarify that um, the, it, it's a, it's a restriction on certain structures that can be put there because of certain height limitations near the tower. Uh, but the fifty-foot buffer, I don't believe applies to somebody walking through the fifty-foot buffer. That is, that is permissible. And I don't believe that poses any, uh, any risk uh, to any individual. It's, it's a, it's more of a height consideration. We can certainly put in plantings, uh, if the, if, if the board wants us to put in fencing around it to cut that area off. Um, we certainly can. I just don't know if there's an actual hazard associated with it. The easement refer, the hazard that the easement is looking to protect against is tall structures that are going to interfere with where the, where the town.
I mean, do, do any of our professionals know if there's a hazard? I mean, I don't know of anyone here who lives that close to a power line that size. Does anyone here on the board live that close to a power tower that size? Who could give me some insight into this?
I, I don't live.
Oh, no, right? No, because we wouldn't.
Well, but again, I, I,
I mean, honestly, if you want to get an expert on here about that.
We're happy to put a fence in if you want. Ms. Cahill, we're happy to put a fence in if you want. I just want to make sure that the,
I, I, I just want some clarity here because no one's addressing this.
Well, I, 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 my, uh, Councilwoman Cahill, first of all, I haven't seen the easement, so I don't even know if they'd be allowed to put a fence around.
Okay, but doesn't, I mean, let, let's back up. Okay, let's just use some common sense here. Do any of you live next to a tower of that size? Would you? And if you did, would you expect there to be some protections there from somebody walking that close to it?
Who is the, who is the, um, is it JCP and L or PSC and G?
JCP and L.
All right, JCP and L may be a bit more amicable to certain things. If it was PSC and G, I would just tell you, they, they do what they want. And you may not want to hear that, but that's true. I had about fifteen years in telecom and dealt with both. Uh, basically easements are, Uh, basically easements are legal documents and there's certain things you can and cannot do. And when you, I mean, I would just, you know, based on my prior experience in there, I had a lot of experience dealing with these companies. Easements, uh, you have to look at what the easement's worded. You can make best efforts to put fences in, but i- if they can't or they won't, they won't.
Okay, this is not, this is less about the people coming before us and more about our own board. Uh, I, I'd like to know what you know, I mean, is this common?
Well, so.
Is this, I mean, what's the experience? What is our expertise? I've seen those towers, they're very large. I mean, I'm certainly not the expert.
All right, I, if you want, I can add in, weigh in on this because we do have similar instances within our community with the same power line, the same easement. Uh, we have on the north side of town, this, this line goes right through Piscataway. We have developments where there's no fencing out there and people actually use the property underneath of the power line, right where the, where the stanchions are. For the power lines, you can go out by Lucille Court, Dawn, and Ray Court out there. Um, as a matter of fact, the, uh, the board, the zoning board just granted a variance for somebody working at that easement just, uh, within the last year out there.
It was just a couple of months ago, actually, yeah.
Yeah, a couple of months ago.
I, I mean, my comment with Councilwoman Cahill, and I understand your, your concerns are, the, the this tower has been there without a fence around it for God knows how many years. Whether or not somebody wants to live by the tower is a personal choice that
Oh, Mr. Barlow, but there wasn't.
If I could just finish.
Okay, fine.
The, the redevelopment plan that was approved by this board knew of the tower's existence when it approved it. And the redevelopment plan doesn't talk about a fence or anything else. We could ask the applicant, and I think the applicants indicated that if, if allowed to, they would be amenable to putting a, a fence around it if the easement allows it, but beyond that, um.
Mr. Barlow, if I can add to that.
Yeah.
If we had, if we can put a fence around it outside of the easement area to, because it's a fifty foot easement around.
Fifty foot and six inches, yeah.
So if we can put a fence, if we're able to do that, we will certainly do that if that's what the township professionals want us to do. If we can put it within the easement area, if JCP and L allows us to do that, we will do that as well. We will defer to the township and the township's professionals and the township's desire as to whether they want that action, that section cordoned off or whether they want it open to allow people to be able to, to, uh, go under it. The only other I can add is that I have done one other application that involves a, uh, JCP and L tower of this type. And it was located, uh, it was an industrial, uh, area, so it wasn't in a residence, but it was, uh, JCP and L, uh, actually wrote a letter on that that indicated they had no objection to us, uh, placing a parking lot, uh, an active parking lot, uh, right up to where the, uh, where those stanchions were. Um, as long as it was in a building and as long as we, uh, maintained our lighting poles in that area under a certain height, they did not have an issue. I can't say we'll have the same, you know, the same outlook on this, but we're happy to do whatever the board or whatever the township.
I, I mean, I, again, I'm not the expert here and, and Mr. Barlow, I understand we approved this. This is the first time I'm seeing these plans.
Yeah, I'll just say.
First time, I mean, I mean, I'm honest, this is first time I see, for all I know, the apartments could have been, you know, backing up to it, not right sort of, you know, in a, a central area, so I understand we approved it, but just looking at the plan for the very first time and the accessibility and PS, by the way, yes, it's been there all that time. There's no road around it, Mr. Barlow. I mean, I'm sure people might have wandered back there, but this is an invitation. You know, this is centrally located and I can appreciate everything that you're all saying. I mean, quite frankly, it still is a thing in my mind. That said, I understand that you'll have to go through your thing. I will just continue to make it noted that that is not something that I would think would be um, smart to just let go without even some sort of something to protect people from wandering. That said, um, I had some other questions that we can get on to, um. Uh, regarding the left turn only with, um, something that you might be looking to go to the county for off South Washington, will that require, um, some of the right of way uh, along, uh, the South Washington side to be, to be taken? Do we know?
Uh, potentially a, a right of way easement is going to be provided. I, I think the township is requiring one and the county may require one as well.
For, for the left.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Um.
That would mean land, land on the frontage might, yeah.
Well, the easements for the township is required regardless of the left turn, but for the county it may be, uh, additional.
Okay.
Yeah, we, Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong in our master plan, we have a hundred, a fifty-five foot right of way out there.
Perfect, and they're, they are providing, and it's shown on the plan, I believe, a fourteen foot easement along.
That's what I recall as well, fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet, okay.
Hmm.
Um, and then, um, has any, have we thought about, uh, installing any kind of electrical charging stations for those apartments at all?
We have forty-four proposed. I think, I think we're actually required forty-five, so we're, we'll be adding one more than.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I may have missed that.
The engineer answered my question. Thank you. It's yet, they're required forty-five if we agree to that. I, I have no other comments.
Yes, agreed.
I didn't see that. Um, and, and then I'm not even gonna bother talking about the, the covered parking. It's just as a side note, it, it's always curious to me that there's no kind of garages. We had another fifty-five and older come before me for senior housing and, uh, just the fact that it is senior housing and it's all exposed parking is always of curious nature to me. Um, why there's no sort of covered parking or parking underneath the buildings, but I get why people don't do that, not required. Um. And one other question with regard back to Site A, I think it is, right, the single family homes?
Yes.
Um, so without basements, um, and I understand those, those basins are good enough, but I mean, is there any concern at all for, um, you know, the weather events that we have here in town? Uh, where that water will go, um, if it's so much without basements, I'm just, and again, not an expert in that field, and maybe Mr. Saleh, you can answer that, but in terms of the, the big rain events and potential for flooding, that means first floor flooding?
Uh, well, we're not within a flood hazard area where this site would flood. So that's not a concern at this site and the fact that we don't have basements is actually kind of a safer condition because
So that the water table, yeah, okay.
Right, so yeah, the water table's not coming up through the bottom for the, through the first floor and, um, we have the stormwater designed adequately to, to convey all stormwater, uh, even future storm events.
Thank you. That answered that question. Thank you.
I have a question if you don't mind.
Um, yes, go ahead.
We spoke about, we spoke about the, uh, ecological park across the street. Is there another way for the seniors to go across the street without having to go all the way down to the light? Is there gonna be a planned light somewhere in there where the, uh, where the entrance is? Or a way that they can maybe cut through the, uh, the two dumpster sites along Washington, South Washington?
There's not a signalized intersection proposed with this application, but I understand it's being looked into when that ecological park is designed that.
Uh, Mr. Saleh, I can add into that, uh, the, there's gonna be a temporary traffic light up there by the adjacent, uh, north of this, uh, site and ultimately a new single lines intersection is gonna be built for the ecological park. Which all have, obviously crosswalks and all the necessary federal standards. So it won't be directly across, they're gonna have to go north to where the two, um, commercial properties, the one commercial property is next door to access, or they can go south at Met, at Metlers Lane. So there'll be two, both one north and one south.
Okay, I was just concerned that they would, uh, they'd have to walk kind of far with their bikes or if they're walking.
A signal, uh, that signal would break up that speed that, uh, it gets built up there along that strip too, if we had to signalize. It would break up the tendency to speed during that, at that strip.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm gonna agree with you, um, way back before when we thought the, the, the other site that is warehouses, we thought that was gonna be a mixed use. I know we talked about, um, a signal there so that people could walk from that area over to the park and making it one of those kind of crosswalks that would be, you know, maybe brighter colored walkways, you know, the things that would slow people down. And I understand this application is, um, not doing that. Um, but I wanted to cut in again on something else, but I don't know, Mr. Saleh, you are talking, um, or testifying at all about the actual design of the, um, you know, I have the, the drawing of the apartment.
The architect will discuss the buildings themselves.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure.
Uh, any other, uh, questions of this witness before we open it up to the public? Okay, hearing no questions right now. Um, members of the public, I, we're open up to you to have any, if you have any questions of Mr. Zalay. He gave testimonies on both sites. The site for the single family, uh, homes as well as the site where the apartments will, uh, be located. If you have any questions, please indicate by, uh, shaking or raising your hand or there's a number that you can call if you're calling on by phone.
Yeah, if you're on the phone, you hit star six. If not, you could raise your hand. No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public. I guess you can call your next witness then.
Uh, thank you. Uh, our next witness would be, uh, John Ray. He's our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Uh, Chris, I don't know if you, uh, if you don't mind, just stop sharing your screen right now unless I.
Yeah, Chris, you can leave those, that exhibit up that shows the two sites.
I need to swear him in. And can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you give would be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Uh, so, uh, John, if you can, please just go over your credentials, uh, briefly, so the board.
Sure. Uh, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My field of, uh, specialty is traffic engineering. I have a total of fifty years' experience in the traffic engineering field, the last forty of which have been doing consulting work here in the state of New Jersey. Uh, and I have appeared before this board and many other boards throughout the state as an expert witness, uh, over the last four years.
Thank you, he's accepted.
Mm-hmm. John, you've had an ability, uh, you've had the opportunity to look at the site and to, uh, opine on it, if you can please give benefit of your years of experience.
Uh, been at to the site on numerous occasions to, uh, look at the existing roadway and traffic conditions in the area. We've done a full traffic impact analysis dated June second, twenty twenty-five. Uh, dealing with Site A first. Uh, we will have access to Suddy Avenue via an extension of Carol Lane. We have analyzed the intersection of Suddy Avenue and Carol Lane for the, uh, twenty twenty-eight design year for the project and have determined that that intersection will operate at level of service A, which is an excellent level of service, uh, with minimal delay. Uh, for the twenty twenty-eight design year for both the AM and PM peak street hours. Uh, that includes traffic that's generated by the Randolphville Elementary School at the end of Suddy Avenue. We did do the traffic counts when school was in session. Um, with respect to the internal circulation, just to, uh, go over what, what Mr. Zalay has testified to, we have what is commonly known as a P-loop. Uh, P as in Peter, uh, that will serve as access to the thirty-nine single family homes. The internal street is, uh, dimensioned, uh, with a cartway of thirty feet, which permits parking on the street according to the RSIS. And so I find that the, um, the intersection of Carol Lane and Suddy Avenue will operate at acceptable levels of service. The site has been designed in conformance with the RSIS and it is my expectation that traffic will enter and exit the site, uh, safely and efficiently, uh, based on, uh, those conclusions. With respect to Site B, that is the larger of the two sites, of course, one hundred and ninety, uh, senior apartments are proposed with a divided boulevard, South Washington Avenue. Uh, South Washington Avenue is under the jurisdiction of Middlesex County, so we will have to get a county approval for our access. Uh, there has, has been a, a discussion earlier today about whether left turns would be permitted into the site. We will be applying for a left turn into the site. Uh, and that will be taken up with the county when the county gets a chance to review that, uh, information. With respect to any other potential turning restrictions such as a left turn out, I can tell you that our traffic study concludes that the left turn, uh, movements out of the driveway, even based on the traffic volumes along South Washington Avenue. Uh, the left turn movements out of the side driveway will operate at level of service D during the morning peak hour and E during the afternoon peak hour. And although they are acceptable levels of service, uh, we are anticipating that there'll probably be a discussion with the county with respect to, uh, restricting left turns out of the site driveway. And the thing I can tell the board is that, um, if and when that should happen and the county should make that, uh, prohibition a, a requirement. There is a reasonable alternative to make the left turn to get back to the north on South Washington Avenue. A, a motorist can make the right turn, go down to the signal at Metlors Lane, and there's a local, uh, street network there that would permit, I guess what we would call a far side jug handle using Lakeside Drive North and Lakeway. Uh, that motorist can reverse direction, come back to the traffic signal at Metlors Lane and make a left turn at the traffic signal to go north on, on South Washington. So I think that's a question that still is, uh, going to be determined by the county, but we do have a reasonable alternative should the county decide to restrict the left turn movement out. Uh, as far as the parking and the internal circulation, uh, not to go over everything Chris has, uh, testified to. Uh, we do provide adequate parking in accordance with the, um, redevelopment plan. Two hundred and ninety-nine parking spaces are required, including the clubhouse parking. We are providing three fourteen with the, um, EV credits. So we meet and exceed the, uh, parking requirement as per the redevelopment plan. Uh, the parking, as you can see from the site plan, is internal to the four buildings for the most part, well distributed. So that, uh, each, uh, building has, uh, access to, uh, that good central parking area. And, um, I guess the only other thing to comment on with respect, uh, South Washington Avenue has a very level and straight alignment in the area. And as long as we provide the site triangles that the county will require, the site distance along South Washington Avenue will be excellent. So, uh, again, I, I find the plans have been designed in accordance with proper traffic engineering principles. We have adequate parking, adequate site distance. And I, I find the site will operate safely and efficiently, uh, just as Site A will. Uh, that, that's basically a quick summary of the traffic study.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ray. Mr. Ray is, uh, uh, available for questions of the board.
Members of the board, do you have any questions for Mr. Ray? Okay, then I guess we. Okay, I was gonna open it up to the public. Mr. Arch, members of the public, um, you've heard the testimony of, of the traffic engineers. Anyone wishing to ask any questions at this time may indicate by waving your hand or calling, dial, dialing nine if you have to call by phone.
Star six.
Star six, I'm sorry.
You were close, it was upside down. Yes, you can either raise your hand, it's on the bottom of your screen, or star six. No, I'm Madam Chair.
Thank you, close to the public.
All right, our, uh, our third and final witness tonight is, uh, Ben Horton. He is our architect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I will note, uh, that, uh, we were requested by the township to provide, um, uh, examples, sort of representative examples of the single family home, so we will be presenting those. Um, I don't want you to think that it's only these examples where we want there to be flexibility for the people that, uh, are gonna be, um, uh, eventually living there, so, uh, this is, again, these are representative to show what can be done there. Uh, but we're not necessarily set in stone that that's exactly what they're gonna look like. We just want to give a, a, a range.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Horton can be sworn in.
Uh, Mr. Arch, I don't mean to interrupt you or your presentation, but just, I, I believe Miss Dolan, the municipalities. the municipalities um, traffic expert is on, and I just, before you moved on to the next expert, I just wanted, Ms. Dolan had any uh, questions or concerns with regards to Mr. Ray's testimony? I know she reviewed it and issued a report, and if she had any concerns from the township's perspective.
Thank you, um, I have no issues, I'm comfortable with the analysis and uh, I am very comfortable with the testimony provided by Mr. Ray.
That's what I thought you might say, but I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to say it.
Same record.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. But I always appreciate being interrupted for something as positive as that.
No problem. You, you may continue, Mr. Arch.
Uh, all right, I think we are swearing in Mr. Horton.
Horton, yes, Mr. Horton, can you please raise your right hand?
Right here.
Oh, okay.
Was there a moment ago?
There he is. Do you swear that the testimony about to give will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
All right, Ben, if you can please just uh, uh, give the board your, some of your qualifications so that you can be accepted.
Absolutely, uh, my name is Benjamin Horton, H O R T E N. I'm with Ben Horton Architecture and Design located at three twelve State Route ten, Randolph, New Jersey. I'm the principal of the firm, I started the company in two thousand. Uh, my background is I received my Bachelor of Fine Arts degree at Carnegie Mellon University, and then I received my Master of Architect, uh, Master of Architecture at Yale University. Um, after graduation, I worked for two major firms, international firms, Canon Design and Gensler. Gensler is one of the largest firms in the world. I worked with those companies for several years, um, and after gaining some experience, I started my company in two thousand, so I've been in business for about twenty-five years. I peo- I appeared before Piscataway on a few occasions, uh, I testified in many new municipalities. Uh, I'm licensed in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, and numerous other states. Um, that's my credentials.
Thank you, so you're acceptable.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Horton, if you can, please uh, show us what uh, what everything's gonna look like.
Okay, uh, let me share my screen, uh, can anyone see this?
Yes.
Okay, great, um. I think I'm gonna s- start first with the uh, the residential, um, the single-family homes first because uh, that's uh, in sequence with the uh, the application, so let me go there first, sorry.
Hmm.
Mr. Arch, are these uh, exhibits that were prepared um, for the hearing this evening, or were these submitted as part of the package already?
I believe these were already submitted, I think we had submitted colorized ones, um, but uh, I'll, I'll defer to, to Mr. Horton, if there's anything that wasn't, that you created uh, specifically for this uh, hearing.
For these single-family homes, they were submitted um, later, uh, the rendering for the single-family home here, there's a set of renderings that, that is colorized that has not been submitted, so I would say that's an exhibit.
So I wanna know in abundance, of course, caution, Mr. Arch, we'll just, everything Mr. Horton puts up, I'll just have marked as an exhibit, um, so we can keep track of it, so.
All right. Very good. Uh, I do apologize where, where the uh, tools are shown, I do have to reduce the size of this PDF before I could uh, get to the tabs. Uh, the first set of drawings I wanna go through is the architectural plans and elevations, and then I would go with the rendering for the single-family homes. I think uh, Mr. Saleh, the civil engineer, described the limitation of eh, the sites. Uh, as you know, there are sites that are five thousand square foot, which is the smallest lot, and some of those uh, larger lots, uh, I, I believe he said that goes up to ten thousand square foot. Uh, we wanted to give you an example, uh, on a small lot, a, 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 of, a s- example of a floor plan. And we did a couple of floor plans for each uh, types. This would be a typical five thousand square foot lot where you're limited to twenty percent of uh, building coverage. So, if you're five thousand square foot, that means your first floor footprint can't be bigger than a thousand square feet. So within that envelope, we wanted to give you uh, an idea of what the house could look like. Uh, so for example, in this option, you have this entrance here, entrance into an open living room, a kitchen dining area. And we thought that some owners may want to have a bedroom on the first floor in case they uh, don't want to go up the, up and down the stairs. Um, and uh, in this unit, it also has a one-car garage. The stairs is a U-shaped stairs which uh, has a mid-landing, which I feel is a more comfortable type of stairs, so you take the stairs upstairs, and you can see upstairs, we have two additional bedrooms, uh, a, a large en suite and a separate sort of lounge area, and, and honestly, uh, the homeowners have a lot of uh, choices on how they wanna rearrange the plan, so we just wanna give you an idea, this is an example of one-floor plan. Uh, within that, this is an example of the elevation, and I think the elevation, I'm gonna save that for the rendering, cuz it tells the picture a little bit better. Uh, another example of the floor plan is simply, obviously, some of the lots are mirrored, uh, so we could accommodate that. And you, you, eh, and you, you can imagine, um, eh, in some plans, you may wanna have an open floor plan uh, on the ground floor and no bedrooms on the first floor and all the bedrooms on the second floor. So we did another layout to show you similar type of floor plan where you have a large open living room, dining room, living room area, uh, same one-car garage and all your bedrooms are upstairs. Now, I, this is very similar to the type of house my mother-in-law lives in, so um, she, she's able to manage the stairs, but um, they do enjoy having the larger open living area. Um, another type of floor plan we did was uh, slightly larger floor plan, this is type C. So when you have a lot that's uh, uh, larger than five thousand square foot, you could obviously have a larger footprint. In this case, we showed an example of footprint that is um, about thirteen hundred square foot, footprint. And so you could accommodate that, uh, in some of the larger lots, you could get even bigger. But we, we didn't wanna, you know, obviously, there's so many choices that you can have, but again, in this option, we showed that you could get a two-car garage in those bigger lots very comfortably, have an open living room, dining room, kitchen area, and a bedroom on the first floor. And in this case, we made a smaller uh, second floor with two bedrooms upstairs, but again, you could probably make that larger if you wanted to, um, if you were a homeowner. So with that same floor p- footprint, we did another option where you do a bedroom on the fir- I'm sorry, this one is just mirrored. But you, you could imagine, you know, uh, you know, on the ground floor, if you do, if you have the master bedroom, uh, if somebody didn't wanna have a master bedroom, that could easily become an office. Uh, there's so many choices that you have. Now I'm gonna go to the um, the rendering here. So.
That is A five, the board.
Yeah. That's great, so on this rendering for a typical house, we wanted to show you, this is one of the smaller homes, that's two-story. This is very typical uh, siding with some stone details, nice windows. Um, here's another option, same floor plan but just different type of material, so there's a quite a bit of things that you can do with the house just by changing the uh, the aesthetic. Now, this, not everybody might not like this mo- next uh, modern-style house I'm gonna show, but I just wanted to show you with the same footprint, there's such a dramatic change that you can make to the design of the house just by changing the uh, architecture. Again, this is the same floor plan, let me show you, go back to the beginning. Uh, one, two, three, and you can see that there's quite a bit of choices that you can make. Now, this is uh, it's the same plan with the uh, um, s- it's slightly different floor plan where you don't, you have a different entrance door. Again, you know, you could change the look um, quite dramatically by just changing the siding and different colors on the window. And this, this is the larger house that has the two-car garage, again, in this case, you know, you see the difference. It's a wider house, two, larger garage. And then same thing, if you just change the siding material, you could dramatically alter the look of the house. So that's a example of uh, what you can do with those lots. Um, those houses, I think you could easily have a footprint that's a thousand square foot for the smaller lot, and then if you add a second floor on top of that, you could easily make it two thousand square foot, or s- you know, within that range. Um, if you get, may have a footprint that's a little bit larger, like for example, the thirteen thousand square foot footprint, you can have a house that's uh, you know, double that, twenty-six hundred square foot relatively easily. Uh, but it's really, it, it gives the homeowner a lot of choices, and I think, you know, when I think of uh, senior housing, I think most people are gonna wanna try to keep the house small, but then they're gonna wanna have a couple extra rooms so that they could have a study or they could have grandkids come visiting. So that, this does give you a lot of options. So that's the uh, single-family home. Now, I'm gonna go to the multifamily home, uh, the apartment buildings. Uh, this one here. These floor plans were, uh, set of floor plans and elevation were submitted to you. Uh, and as you saw, there were five buildings, four apartment buildings and one uh, clubhouse. Uh, there were labeled on the site plan, Building A, B, C, and D, and then E for the clubhouse. Uh, this is uh, Building A, you can see on the drawings on the lower right corner, we labeled it as Building A. And uh, we provided the typical ground floor plan and a typical upper floor plan for each of the building. Um, and when you look at the chart, for example, in this building here, top right corner of the drawings, you see a chart that says the number of one bedrooms and number of two bedrooms. We tried to put in more two-bedroom units because uh, from a marketing perspective, we find that the two-bedroom units are more desirable, cuz it gives people more flexibility. The other thing to note is that these units, these apartment units are, we, we try to make it more desirable by making it, making, making the sizes of the unit uh, 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 you know, very competitive in the market. Um, typical one-bedroom units, uh, let me take you to a floor that has a one-bedroom here. The blue unit is one-bedroom. You can see this is shown at ninety-five, ninety-three hundred square foot net, whereas the uh, the two-bedroom units are approximately thirteen thousand, uh, thirteen hundred square feet. So all the one-bedrooms in this complex are typically in that nine hundred square foot range, and that's net square foot, not rows. A lot of times when you chopper apartments, uh, people are gonna show gross numbers just to make it seem bigger, but the net numbers are the numbers uh, not including the exterior walls. Um, and they are uh, all around nine hundred square foot, plus or minus a few square foot, uh, higher, fewer uh, few square foot lower, but it's in that range. You know, as a comparison, what's nice is that when you look at one-bedroom apartments, say in Manhattan, you may have a six hundred square foot uh, one-bedroom apartment here, we have nine hundred square foot. Two-bedroom apartments are around thirteen hundred square foot, which is, you know, very generous. The room sizes are big, living areas are uh, very generous. Each of the building, uh, I would, I would like you to note that, you know, they have elevators, they're gonna be fully accessible, handicap accessible, they're gonna have their own little lounge areas and activity rooms a- as well as, you know, the shared clubhouse that uh, everyone's gonna have access to. And one of the things that the township you, you request that we include is that each building have a, a roof garden so that they have some uh, nice roof uh, areas to uh, relax in on their roof. Now, again, the elevations of the building, I'm going to defer to the rendering because I think that tells a better story. But I think one of the things I would note with the floor plan, you can see, we took care to kinda jog the walls along the perimeter so they're not always flat, cuz I think you've seen a lot of buildings that are just simple, flat and not attractive. We tried to add these bumps to make the building look a little more attractive as they, as you build them three mentally. Uh, again, this is Building B, same thing, you got the ground floor with shared uh, lobby, eh, elevators and amenity spaces. Uh, you got a series of one bedrooms and two bedroom units. And then uh, there's a, a roof terrace here at the top floor. This building here is um, four-story on the left side and three-story on the right side. Again, that was um, the civil engineer and uh, my office and the township uh, professionals, we spent some time talking about what portions of the building should be three stories and what portions of the building should be four-story that. Uh, uh, and this is the result of Building B. Uh, Building C, same, it's very similar as the, the other buildings, ground floor, you have the nice lobby area, uh, amenity spaces, elevators, uh, typical upper floors. You have the, the combination of one bedroom and two bedroom units. You can see it varies, and this one uh, is a four-story building. Um, this is four-story all the way across, whereas uh, some of the buildings is three-story for a portion of the building. This is four-story all the way across, and we will have a, a roof patio uh, on this building as well. Uh, this is the, the last building, Building D, which is the L-shaped one located next to the clubhouse. Um, this one again, uh, a ground floor with a lobby uh, and all those many spaces, and then you have, you can see the combination of one bedroom and the two bedrooms. And this is also a four-story building. Now, the clubhouse is gonna um, have a large community room, maybe a library, some administrative offices, locker rooms, shower areas for the pool, and a, a small uh, kitchen to service the uh, various activities that might happen in the multipurpose room. And this, this building is obviously located right next to the um, the pool, uh, the pool and outdoor amenity space, and this one, I, I think, think again, if you let me get to the uh, rendering, again, this rendering was submitted. Uh, all the apartment buildings have a similar aesthetic where we mix the, the, uh, the materials so it doesn't look all flat. The walls are gonna jog in and out, and you're gonna have combination of, if I could zoom in, you could see uh, stone materials, uh, stucco type of materials, as well as some sort of like a, a low-maintenance siding type of material, so we could vary those details as well as adding these uh, you know, decorative uh, um, parapets here that has some uh, nice shapes to it. In some cases, we're able to put a little pergola up on top, so if it's a three-story building, you could have a small covered area. On the four-story buildings, unfortunately, we can't do that because of the height restriction. But uh, in most of the buildings, we were able to do a nice covered uh, roof patio as well. You can see, this is uh, Building B, where you have a four-story building and a three-story building, and the roof terrace is located over the three-story building, so we could have a little bit of cover porch, uh, covered uh, roof terrace there as well. And then you can see the materials are very similar, uh, so that they're cohesive from one building to the next. And then this is the uh, Building C. Yeah, Building C is a four-story building, so you will have a roof terrace, but uh, unfortunately, we won't be able to put a a covered roof because that would exceed the uh, the roof height. Building D, same thing, it's a four-story building, it does not have a, a covered roof uh, patio, but it will have a roof patio. And there, again, the buildings are very similar in nature, using the, the similar type of materials and making sure the walls all jog in and out to give it more uh, varied shape. Then the community center takes cues from the apartment buildings and uh, uses those same warm color materials, uh, and it would be made so that the uh, you know, the, the building have some uh, volume to it, so those community rooms will have s- uh, taller ceilings. You can see the uh, this, this is a one-story building, but the uh, middle section of the roof is twenty feet high where the main community room is, so that we could have a community room that has a nice tall ceiling, at least ten or uh, ten feet or higher, possibly even twelve feet high. Okay? So that's it, that's really the uh, uh, the five buildings that we provided uh, on this property, so if there's any questions.
Ben, if I can just ask one thing before we go to questions, uh, just to Dawn's uh, uh, earlier point and earlier question as to uh, being able to provide um, a, uh, some sort of certification that we are meeting those uh, standards that she asked for, we have no problem doing that, correct?
No, absolutely, a- all the apartment buildings, um, you can see is a combination of one and two bedroom, and there's a percentage rule you have to follow. Uh, it, it, uh, off the top of my head, uh, I believe uh, currently it's twenty percent. It does change uh, e- every so often, but currently, my, my understanding is twenty percent. And uh, if you look at, at the floor plan, there's no distinction between the units. All the units are really generously sized, and I think it doesn't matter, um, my opinion is, they should be treated the same way, and so the subsidized units that are lower income, you can't distinguish it from the other units, there, they'll be dispersed throughout the buildings, and you, you won't know the difference.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Uh, Mr. Horton is available for any questions of the board.
Okay, members of the board, you have any questions for Mr. Horton?
Madam Chair, this is Councilwoman Cahill. Um, thank you so much. I had just a couple of questions with regard to the single-family homes. So um, uh, am I to understand um, that the owners sort of will get an option of design in there, that they're all not gonna be sort of cookie cutter?
Yes, that's correct, and, and I think what we tried to show, because um, I think before we uh, had the hearing date, uh, some of the board members asked, you know, can you prepare a floor plan to show what the houses might look like? Because I, I think the, when you have a five thousand square foot uh, lot, the maximum footprint you can do by your ordinance is one thousand square foot. And within that one thousand square foot, I, I think people, you know, you have to provide a garage based on your ordinance. So you have to have at least one car garage. Uh, and then within that, the remaining space, what can you do with it? So I tried to show those floor plan options to, to show that, but you know.
That's great, yeah, just wanted to make sure that that was the case, I, I think that's great. Um, my other question was pertaining to the apartment building with the um, and I know these are just, you know, sort of first renderings with the materials. Um, it's hard to, and I, I mean, maybe they listed here, the material it's um, gonna be like stone. Is there a particular sort of stone that it's supposed to replicate? I see the one stone, what about just those, the section next to it? Where the, yeah, right now where your hand is, what is that?
We were thinking that would be more like a fire, fiber cement type of siding material that uh, eh, that almost looks like wood, but it's low maintenance?
Oh, right, 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 so it's supposed to look like wood, so this would be a stone wood? And then is that lighter material meant to be a like um,
Like stucco?
A stucco? Or is that also a wood?
It, this also could be that fiber cement type of board, or it could be uh, the, the stucco type of material.
Right, but just a lighter in contrast?
Right, that's correct.
Right, or, and just another quick, I see it's a, uh, uh, you know, not that I totally don't like the, the brown tones, the more earthy ones, are these colors set in stone? Are you still finalizing these plans?
Well, well, these materials, um, we, I think, th- this is the coloring. We, during that design stage, uh, when we were working back with your, uh, I, I think, uh, technical committee, we, we looked at s- quite a variety of color options. Uh, we, we, because I think one of the questions was, eh, you know, co-, one of the comment was, one, they didn't wanna see a building that was just completely flat, and that was completely uh, like monotone. And so we looked at options where we vary the, vary, vary the materials, you know, to different colors. So we did some different color options where we uh, tried different colors, actual colors. And ultimately, uh, the, the neutral tones, I think, was more palatable for, uh, for uh, the reviewers. Personally, personally, I think we are gonna vary the materials. We got three different materials with some trim colors, so eh, that, that does cr- uh, provide quite a bit of variety.
Okay, and then um, just another quick question. So um, I'm not, I don't know which rendering of yours has it, but there's one with a large set of, so actually, on the top picture there that you have, those three sort of main entrances, that goes into that common area that you were talking about, the, okay, that, that's what, right, the main lobby. And then I have another rendering that kind of looks like there's a handy, sort of a handicap ramp on the side, but then steps coming up to a main thing.
This building.
Yes. I- is there any particular reason why that looks that way? And another building looks sort of like as a flat entrance coming in?
I, I think because the grading, the way the grading worked on the site plan.
Oh, okay.
Entrance here for this building was a little bit higher from the sidewalk. This, this render, we try to represent that there's gonna be a, a elevation difference at the entrance door and the sidewalk over here. This is a, uh, I think, uh, my staff took a little bit of artistic uh, liberty here, but they meant to show that the actual lobby elevation is slightly higher than the sidewalk.
Than sidewalk, so there, the, so if need be, there'll be sort of that gradual for like wheelchair access to the hood.
They're, they're made to be fully hundred percent accessible.
Okay, uh, thank you, tho- those were all my questions, I appreciate it.
Okay, any other members of the board have questions of Mr. Horton? No questions, okay, then let's open it up to the public. Members of the public, you've heard Mr. Horton's testimony. Anyone wishing to uh, ask questions of Mr. Horton, you can either raise your hand or push star six, uh, if you have a telephone, a question by telephone.
Anyone from public, everyone's unmuted, so. No one, Chairwoman?
All right, close to the public.
Uh, thank you, uh, so that is our last witness. Uh, just briefly, I will, uh, I will sort of sum up. Uh, this is, again, this is a redevelopment project, we are one hundred percent fully conforming with your redevelopment plan. Uh, we are not requesting any deviations, uh, we are agreeing to all of the uh, the comments and suggestions from your professionals and will continue to uh, work with your professionals to make sure that this is uh, dialed in and uh, and, you know, perfectly uh, what the township wants. Um, we will agree to uh, to all the conditions that were, were mentioned here tonight. Um, and uh, I, I'm sure each of our professionals will give you their firstborn child if they, if they, if they want to. Although I think Chris just had a kid, so maybe not him, uh, but.
I'm an empty nester, I don't want any more kids.
Uh, so, uh, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, we, we are happy to work with the town and to uh, quite frankly, make sure that this is uh, something that everybody is proud of, a- and will continue to work with you. So thank you for uh, for giving us the time tonight, and uh, we look forward to uh, hopefully getting your approval.
Madam Chair, before you go to take it for a vote, um, Mr. Arch, I was just curious. I mean, I know that um, it's a ways away before these are built, but is there any indication as to um, price ranges that this developer is looking at, the kind of, you know, customer, you know, affordability? I, I mean, not COA, but you know, just an idea, or we don't have any privy to that yet.
I personally have not, uh, have not had that conversation with the, with my um, uh, client. I can certainly ask him, we're, we're on a text chain, I can ask him uh, if he knows that yet. It might, I, I kinda guess that it's a little early to be, to be guessing what those prices are going to be. Uh, you did mention there is gonna be an affordable aspect, so we are, obviously have to follow the, the uh, the affordable housing aspects with that. Um, but I don't know if we have a price range necessarily set yet.
I appreciate that.
And yeah, we, and I just got confirmation, we, we don't have a, a range of prices that we think uh, we're gonna market them at.
Do we have a, do we have a date, approximate date when uh, they'll be ready, the houses as well as the apartments?
Uh, if you ask my client, he, he, he wants them built yesterday. Um, uh, I, I can tell you that we are, if we get your approval here tonight, we are gonna be moving uh, as quickly as we can to get through all of the other uh, approval hurdles that we need to, to be able to get building permits. Um, I know that they are anxious to, to get this, uh, to get this started. So I can't give you an, an approximate time yet, um, but I can tell you that we, we, we're not gonna be sitting on this one.
If I could ask one question, which um, you have site A and site B, which pro-, which section is going to go under construction first?
Uh, that's a good question, do we have a, uh, Chris, do you know if, if there is, if it's gonna be concurrent or if there is any? They're really almost treated as two, as two separate because of that separation between them. So I don't see why they couldn't be concurrently uh, pursued, but uh, I'll, I'll leave it to Chris to see if there's any.
Yeah, I believe they're, they're gonna be one and then the other, I think just due to financial purposes. Um, at one point, I believe that the single family was intended to be first, and I just, we haven't talked about it in a while, so I don't know if that's still the case.
Uh, I can add that my, my client did indicate by text that uh, the intention is they, they do want to try to do both at the concurrently. So uh, that's what the intent is gonna be, hopefully, we'll be able to, to make that a reality.
Um, Madam Chair, I apologize, I di- I overlooked one of my questions, Mr. Arch. Um, with the, with the access of the, the clubhouse for the folks in the single-family home, that's gonna be, I mean, in some cases, some people might walk, but that's essentially a drivable sort of situation, right? Since the wetlands are in between, there's, and um, and they will need some sort of credentials or something so that, eh, you know, folks aren't just randomly going into the clubhouse and it's, and it's for its owners, i- is that, I don't even know how that stuff works. Just curious how they keep it to the folks who are paying into the HOA and things of that nature.
Yeah, I, I, I can only assume, I, I don't know if we've, if we've gone into that detail. I can assume that the HOA will provide uh, some form of a uh, credential, uh, you know, number of passes or something to the, to the individuals that they'll have to uh, show to get in there. I know in, in previous uh, apartment complexes that I've lived in, there have been, you know, you need to have like either key card access or some sort of uh, way to access the, the clubhouse facilities. And I imagine it'll be something uh, similar to that, I believe a key fob system, but that'll be sorted out with the HOA.
You know what, so that brings up a question, so with the, with the accessibility for the folks in the single-family home who, I don't know, and how many per, what percentage of folks are gonna take their car? I'd imagine quite a few will bring their car, that, that, that parking allotment, I'm asking maybe our town professionals, we've taken into consideration, right, folks coming from single-family homes with their cars to access the community center there.
The clubhouse required fourteen additional parking spaces.
Okay.
That was what was determined.
Thank you.
Okay, are we good? Um, do I have a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Foster.
Oh, is that you, Mr. Atkins?
Mr. Foster.
Foster, I didn't see.
Move the application with all the conditions agreed to by Mr. Arch, correct, Mr. Foster?
Is that true?
I think he said yes. It's hard to hear him.
Okay, is there, okay. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Earl Saunders, second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mayor Waller?
Uh, yes, with to make sure with a caveat with the, the list of all the conditions and everything that we spoke about here.
Mr. Arch is nodding, he's had an agreement.
Yes.
Councilwoman Cahill?
Yes, and I'm just going to ditto what the mayor said.
Ms. Corcoran?
Yes.
Ms. Saunders?
Yes.
Mr. Atkins? Mr. Foster?
Yes.
And Madam Chair.
Yes. Mr. Barlow, you wouldn't, would you like to enumerate the conditions?
That might take the right, might, might add to the meeting, but um, Mr. Mr., I, I have a list of them, and Mr. Arch.
Let's just put it this way, Mr. Barlow, it'll, it'll be on the board approval conditions and demoralization.
Yes.
Hundred percent, it'll all be uh, encompassed in, in the resolution for next month. Mr. Arch, if I could just ask, um, your engineers exhibits one through four, if you can make sure um, he emails them to Ms. Buckley?
Yes, uh, we'll provide those as well as Mr. Horton's exhibit uh, as well.
Thank you.
And Mr. Barlow, if you miss any of the conditions, I'll make sure to remind you.
If you don't, I'm sure the mayor or Ms. Corcoran will.
Thank you, everybody, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Everybody, most, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Yep, second.
And happy Halloween, everybody.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.